February tenth, one twenty-five at Marion City Council for the city council meeting. City Hall, the city council meeting.
My skin is...
Oh yeah, that could be your, like, kiss. It really might be.
Yeah.
I don't know if you guys like each other. Makes sense, too.
So have you seen what you tried with their... No, so you could literally, like, if you... So, like, theirs are indicative of, like, whatever their... So, like, if they're super healthy after smoke or whatever. They're saying now...
Yeah. But, and, is it... Keeps it...
He's friends with... Part. Pretty hard.
If I did it by doing it, I'd... I kind of scrolled through all of them. As you couldn't, like, scroll and get a... And then go back.
No, it was kind of boring to watch because it was like... It was so...
Yeah, but, like, the last sixty or more, I was, like, kind of said the same thing. The first, like, hundred and thirty, I tried to...
Oh, no!
I didn't write this.
Okay, we'll go ahead and close tonight's meeting. Go over it, if you will. Please, Jim, please.
To the flag of the United States of America, consider it a object for which stands our nation under God. It is a goal that the Republicans just as well.
Mayor Payton.
Here.
Councilmember Shaveta.
Here.
Councilmember Cozmeier.
Here.
Councilmember Hands.
Here.
Councilmember Caldwell.
Here.
Councilmember Leahy.
Here.
Councilmember Ryder.
Here.
Councilmember Silver.
Here.
Councilmember Yadrich.
Here.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Okay, next item up is public items. Members of the public are encouraged to use this time to make comments about matters that do not appear on the agenda. Comments about items on the record agenda will be taken up as each item is considered. Please, our members, just make a public comment. Just put them to five minutes. We do have a sign sheet, which no one signed up for, but is there anyone in the audience that would like to come forward at this time? And I would question the podium, so we will close out the public item portion of that. Next item up is the consent agenda, and all items listed under this heading, considered to be routine by the city council, may be enacted by one motion. There will be a separate discussion of these items as the council members so request, in which case that item may be removed from the consent agenda, considered separately. We do have two items this evening, because the council members wish to have one of them removed. If I were to move it, I would entertain a motion. Mr. Silver.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to move that the council approve consent agendas, number, item number one to the challenge.
Mr. Mayor, second.
Motion, second.
Councilmember Shaveta.
Aye.
Councilmember Cozmeier.
Aye.
Councilmember Hands.
Aye.
Councilmember Caldwell.
Aye.
Councilmember Leahy.
Aye.
Councilmember Ryder.
Aye.
Councilmember Silver.
Aye.
Councilmember Yadrich.
Aye.
Motion passes eight zero.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Next item up is the mayor's report, and this evening we have a proclamation that I would like to read. Whereas during Black History Month, we celebrate many achievements and contributions made by African-Americans and recognize their central role in U.S. history. And whereas, Black History Month evolved out of Carter G. Woodson's idea for Negro History Week, which started in nineteen twenty-six to promote African-American history and culture and achievements. And whereas, the observance of Black History Month calls our attention to the continued need to battle racism and build a society that upholds its democratic ideals. And whereas, the twenty twenty-five national theme for the observance is African-Americans and Labor, which highlights the significant role Black people have played in the workforce throughout history, from slavery to modern-day leadership positions in various industries. And whereas, the city of Marion will join the nation in honoring African-Americans and highlighting the workforce contributions to our city. And whereas, the city of Marion is proud of its Black history, which includes a school desegregation lawsuit, a precursor to Brown versus the Board of Education versus Topeka. Now, therefore, I, Bob Page, by the virtue of the authority vested in me as the mayor of Marion, is to hereby proclaim February twenty twenty-five as Black History Month, and on the tenth day of February twenty twenty-five. This goes out to all those individuals in our community. Okay, other items, I always like to list a few things that have occurred. Some of this I wrote by name, so I'll see how well I read my own handwriting. Okay, the I and Sir staff attended the Kansas Park and Recreation Association Conference in Manhattan, Kansas. Director Slocum received the twenty twenty-five Administration Branch Award, and her department, Department of Rec, received the twenty twenty-five Outstanding Recreation Program for the Taylor Swift Pop-Up Award. And then I received actually a twenty twenty-five Distinguished Elected Official Award for promoting parks and reps. And although I'm honored to have received that award, we all know it's her department that does all the great programs, and thank you to your staff and for everything that they've done, these paths on our wishes and thank yous for them, and congratulations for winning that award. Okay, I also got to meet with the Northeast Chamber of Commerce Leadership Class, give them a short presentation on the history of Marion. We have two employees currently enrolled in the Northeast Leadership Class, Jasmine and Butros, and Cole Server are in... Our congratulations to them for taking that. They are part of the future leaders in our community and our city that are honing the skills to take over the reins of, uh, in the later day. Okay, I and councilmember, we have met with Mr. Regal, per tonight's agenda, and I and several staff and the councilmembers, our state legislators and staff in Topeka, to discuss what's important to us in Marion and what's happening at the state level that, of pending legislation that might affect us. Councilmember and I attended the Northeast Chamber ribbon cutting that occurred at Spire Play Cafe, which is located down in Marion Town Center. Please go by there and take a look at that. It's actually fifty-six forty, and, uh, one of the exact addresses. But I met with Commissioner Kelly and numerous Johnson County mayors to discuss the twenty twenty-six FIFA games that will be hosted in our metro area. There'll be many more meetings as we look at all the things that need to be done to put on an event of this magnitude in our metro area. I and Sir Pelson attended our Marion City employees' lunch event, speaking right ahead of the staff. I and a councilmember met with others at Northeast Chamber of Commerce, and also Georgetown Apartments, does major renovations over there, our apartment complex, and we got Dick Turner, which is very nice. I and a councilmember attended the Tim Murphy Art Gallery opening night, several of... That's always nice to, and Anna always cooks for us, so that's good, too. But I and several councilmembers and numerous staff met at City Hall and took a chief's pick to cheer the wonderful Super Bowl. It didn't turn out like we wanted it to, but, you know, we do have to give them props for at least getting a Super Bowl for three, three years in a row. There's always next year, so... And a councilmember attended the Stony Bogan Retirement Celebration. And of course, those who didn't know Stony, he worked for the Chamber of Commerce, Northeast Chamber of Commerce, and he's still gonna live there in Marion, so he is a Marion resident. Several councilmembers attended, and staff, I would say, attended the National Hot Chocolate Day. I don't know why we didn't have a proclamation for that. I'm guessing it was really good. I missed that one. Did I miss it? Any of the councilmembers that I... All right, whatever goes on, it's just this council meeting, so that concludes my mayor's report. Okay, looks like the next item up would be a resolution, council items, a resolution adopting the region hazardous mitigation plan. Our place chief has it.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. What you have before you is a resolution adopting the hazardous mitigation plan. We did this five years ago in twenty twenty. Basically, we are required, Johnson County and then all the... Johnson County are required to adopt the hazardous mitigation plan so that we can be eligible for FEMA funds, even if we have a issue. This plan was developed in twenty twenty-three, and twenty twenty-four, and it's basically the same plan that was in twenty twenty-five with some changes. And it was adopted by the Board of County Commissioners in twenty twenty-four, as now is part, we're required, all the states are required to adopt the same plan this year by a resolution. I can answer any questions.
Okay, we have any questions for the chief? Okay, I see no questions for the chief. We do need to dump it. I would entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move that the council approve a resolution adopting the region L hazardous mitigation plan.
Okay, I have a second challenge.
Mr. Mayor, second.
Madam Clerk, we have a motion, a second.
Councilmember Cozmeier.
Aye.
Councilmember Hands.
Aye.
Councilmember Caldwell.
Aye.
Councilmember Leahy.
Aye.
Councilmember Ryder.
Aye.
Councilmember Silver.
Aye.
Councilmember Yadrich.
Aye.
Councilmember Shaveta.
Aye.
Motion passes eight zero.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Next item up is for approval of an ordinance authorizing the sale and... Director Slocum, tell us the rest of this.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Before you this evening is an ordinance for the sale, consumption, possession of alcoholic liquor for two of our events, Marion Drive Live and new this year Marion's seventy-fifth birthday party. The reason we need to bring this ordinance forward is because we don't want to confine alcohol to one specific area. We want them to be able to cross the street and move within the area of the event. The area is outlined again in Exhibit A, and is the same area that we have used the last several years when we brought this item forward. The only difference this year is we are asking to extend this area for the seventy-fifth birthday party later in October of this year. So basically, as you can see, it's the same. So any questions in regards to ordinance, I'm asking that you waive, consider waiving the first reading on this ordinance as well.
Do we have any questions for Sir Silver? See no questions. We're interested in waiving. I would entertain a motion. Okay, go ahead.
Mr. Mayor, I move that the council waive the customary reading of an ordinance authorizing the sale, consumption, possession of alcoholic liquor during the Marion Drive Live event and Marion's seventy-fifth birthday.
Do we have a motion? Do we have a second? Yes, please, please go ahead.
Mr. Mayor, I'll second.
We have a motion, a second.
Councilmember Hands.
Aye.
Councilmember Caldwell.
Aye.
Councilmember Leahy.
Aye.
Councilmember Ryder.
Aye.
Councilmember Silver.
Aye.
Councilmember Yadrich.
Aye.
Councilmember Shaveta.
Aye.
Councilmember Cozmeier.
Aye.
Motion passes eight zero.
Okay, so that was for waiving. Ms. Shaveta, would you like to make a motion for...
I move that the council approve an ordinance authorizing the sale, consumption, and possession of alcoholic liquor during the Marion Drive Live event and Marion's seventy-fifth birthday.
Do we have a motion? Do we have a second challenge?
Mr. Mayor, second.
Madam Clerk, we have a motion, a second.
Councilmember Caldwell.
Aye.
Councilmember Leahy.
Aye.
Councilmember Ryder.
Aye.
Councilmember Silver.
Aye.
Councilmember Yadrich.
Aye.
Councilmember Shaveta.
Aye.
Councilmember Cozmeier.
Aye.
Councilmember Hands.
Aye.
Motion passes eight zero.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. So next item up is... My computer's kind of acting up here, but... It is a considerable payment of two hundred fifty thousand dollars. It went down, I'm trying to get my screen back. Sir Hoover, waiving the weight carries, that's the next one. We have Sir Silver still voting. Please, please advise us of what...
So now that you've approved the ordinance that will allow us to open up the serving of alcohol, you now need to give us permission to actually serve alcohol at three of our events. This is something that we did beginning in twenty sixteen, which allows you all to waive the fee associated with our caterer's license, so that our caterer doesn't have to pay the five hundred dollar fee associated with serving alcohol in Marion. And it's only for city-sponsored events. We are proposing three events to serve alcohol at this year. Concert in the Courtyard and MDL, the new one being the birthday party for this year, so I'm asking for permission to serve alcohol at those events and waive the fee.
Any questions for Sir Silver, considering the signing? Questions or entertain a motion? Do we have a challenge?
Mr. Mayor, I move that the council approve the serving of alcohol at three events and waive the caterer's license fee for Concert in the Courtyard, Marion Drive Live, and Marion's seventy-fifth birthday.
Do we have a motion? Do we have a second? This way, okay, Ms. Hands.
Yes, and all seconded up?
Councilmember Leahy.
Aye.
Councilmember Ryder.
Aye.
Councilmember Silver.
Aye.
Councilmember Yadrich.
Aye.
Councilmember Shaveta.
Aye.
Councilmember Cozmeier.
Aye.
Councilmember Hands.
Aye.
Councilmember Caldwell.
Aye.
Motion passes eight zero.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Now I think we're to consider a payment of two hundred fifty thousand. Mr. Mayor, we'll come to the voting.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Next item on your agenda relates to the Upper Turkey Creek project. If you will recall, in December, you authorized a two hundred dollar payment for our fiscal year twenty-five work that we are completing with the overall engineering for that project. Starting back in twenty twenty-two, we, we signed a design agreement with the Corps that every year there would be a, um, a shared payment for the work that's done that year, and every January, and we've brought forward an invoice. What's different this year is that we paid the first half of it because we believed that was going to be sufficient. The projected cost is still one point six million dollars worth of work. We just did not anticipate we would need it all at the beginning of the year, so we only were invoiced for the first three hundred thousand dollars in December. This would be the second payment for two hundred fifty thousand dollars, but again, it is not an increased workload. It's just the bids came in high for the work that they wanted to do in the first quarter, and so we need some additional funds because they have a requirement that they have to have the funds in comfort in order to actually do the work. So again, it's not a change of scope. Nothing's changed since December. If we would have known it was going to cost this much, I would have waited until now to bring it forward, and I asked for all of it once, but that's not how it worked out. I'm happy to answer any questions, which may happen.
Any questions, Mr. Regal? Go ahead, Mr. Silver. No questions. Strasbar, question?
Yeah, so this includes the entire local portion, and so the amount that we're getting reimbursed from Johnson County is going to cover some of this, five hundred fifty thousand dollars. Yes, sir, so the, the Fed, so one point six million dollars is split sixty-five percent federal, thirty-five percent local, and we are the local sponsors, so we are the lead. We have our partners at the county that have agreed through SMAC, Stormwater Management. They're going to pay seventy-five percent of that thirty-five percent. Okay, yes, so we will pay the full two hundred fifty thousand dollars if you approve it tonight, then we will seek reimbursement. We're actually holding off the reimbursement from the December payments. We can send one in. Yes, we will seek reimbursement at the, at seventy-five percent of this amount. And then how long does it usually take for Johnson County to reimburse local or the municipalities? They're, they're pretty quick because they've already encountered those funds because they know that they were coming, so it's already part of their budgeted process, so I mean, we would give them with that. Okay, great.
Mr. Silver, your question?
You know, this, this question is actually just for public record. At the start of your statement, you said that all we voted to, voted for a two hundred fifty dollar...
Two hundred fifty thousand dollars.
Right, I just wanted to clarify that for the record, so two hundred fifty thousand.
Mr. Kuzman.
Yeah, and then so this total amount of money that we're spending this year takes us through that thirty-five percent design? It should, yes, it should. We have asked them to, uh, complete some additional work to help the council make their decision when they need to make their decision. Some of this will go towards that, but the, we anticipate this will be the last of the funding that we need before we need to make that decision. Okay, great, thanks.
Your question, Mr. Regal? Okay, I see no additional questions. I would entertain a motion for payment of this expense. Ms. Hands.
Mr. Mayor, I move that the council approves a payment of two hundred fifty thousand dollars to the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers to further the engineering and design of the Upper Turkey Creek Stormwater Project.
Okay, Mr. Kuzman.
Mr. Mayor, like a second?
Madam Clerk, we have a motion, a second.
Councilmember Ryder.
Aye.
Councilmember Silver.
Aye.
Councilmember Yadrich.
Aye.
Councilmember Shaveta.
Aye.
Councilmember Cozmeier.
Aye.
Councilmember Hands.
Aye.
Councilmember Caldwell.
Aye.
Councilmember Leahy.
Aye.
Motion passes eight zero.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Looks like the next item up would be CFP items for the February CFP update.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. The February CFP update's in your packet. I know there's been questions about the Seventy-Fifth Street Bridge. We did have a kickoff meeting, and Pyramid is in the process of design. It should be completed by mid-April. They'll come back with two options. One is to close the bridge in the time period and the cost, and then the other is to keep it open and how much that'll cost. And then, once the governing bodies meet and we make a decision on that, hopefully they can start construction while school's out, is the plan. It just depends on how long it'll take. But that's the plan right now, so I'll keep you updated on that.
Anything else?
Do you have any questions on any of them?
Any other, any questions for your company? I see no questions.
Thank you.
For the update. Next item up is our annual, our semi-monthly single hauler update. We have Scott.
Yes, good evening. I really don't have any updates since our last meeting. We are still progressing. The bid, the RP is still up to bid. The closing for that is on this Friday. We haven't received any bids to this point, but we did have a mandatory pre-bid meeting in which we had seven haulers show up, too, so hopefully we'll get some good bids coming in later this week. Once we get those bids in, we will have a work group meeting later this month, and then we will decide from there, kind of depending on what the bids look like, what recommendations we're going to make to the council. And then in March, we will have a work session following the city council meeting, so we can comprehensively go over all of the details to date, including all the bids and the information. Other than that, happy to be answering questions.
Any questions, Ms. Garden? I see no questions. Good update. Then, eventually, I have another, we had part and rec advisory board minutes for our packets. Do you have any questions for Sir Slocum? Gosh, what is pulling this? I don't know if this is record now, but we're doing pretty good. Boy, have we quit out?
Twenty-seven minutes is the record since I've been here since twenty nineteen.
When you do, Mr. Regal, we have to think of staff.
Yeah, I'm gonna do like a mayor's report, tell you everything I've done.
Oh, please, carry on. Item number one.
Goals and objectives are due on Friday. Again, we're not looking for anything additional to add, but we have heard from a couple councilmembers, just as a reminder, those are your opportunity to give us some feedback.
Those are your opportunity to give us some feedback of things that you'd like us to place in the budget for funding priorities for next year. So they don't have to be pretty. Just send us ideas and we will help put skin on the bone. Again, not asking for anything more, but just wanted to make sure I said the deadline's Friday. Other than that, I'm happy to answer any questions. Any questions? We'll talk for three more minutes. Go for the record. Any other, any questions? Okay, no questions. And we have no executive session or anything this evening? Unless you want to. No. I would entertain a motion for adjournment.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we adjourn.
Who? I have a second.
I'll second that.
Okay, Ms. Hands, Madam Clerk.
All in favor, quickly.
Aye.
Meeting's adjourned.
You're right. You do?